Good evening. It is Thursday, October 8th. This is the regular meeting of the governing body of the city of Spring Hill at 7:00 p.m. And we'll call our meeting to order. Our first order of business, as always, is our invocation. We're happy to have with us Pastor Michael Brown with Methodist Church. Those of you who wish to do so, please stand and join us in prayer.
Please adopt solemn attitude as I pray. Wise Father, we wish to thank you this evening for the many blessings you've bestowed upon this great city. We thank you for the freedom to meet together, to make decisions for our community. We ask your blessings upon those who safeguard that freedom, and especially our local first responders. There is great responsibility on all in this room. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for our various city officials and staff, and particularly for this assembled council. May you, Lord, grant to these people tonight the wisdom to govern your people through these times, a sense of the true needs of our citizens, a thirst for justice and righteousness, the grace to work together even within honest disagreement, and a personal peace, both in their lives and their joy in their task. Please grant these things, especially tonight. In thanksgiving and expectation, we pray, oh Lord. Amen.
If you continue to stand for the pledge.
Let's introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Leighton?
Here.
Mr. Owen?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next item is approval of the agenda. I have no requested staff additions or deletions. Are there any requested council changes? Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. This takes us to citizen participation. This is an opportunity in the meeting for residents to address the council items that are already on the agenda. Anyone wishing to do so, we just ask that you step up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. Have the council's attention. We have three people who've signed up. First is Mr. Boswell. Mr. Boswell, you have the floor.
Hi, Steve Boswell, 504 North Jackson, Spring Hill, Kansas. Had a couple of questions that I wanted to maybe address the council with. We are looking at fiber networks and apparently have now cleared our investigation as the city goes. And that's a great thing. However, from what I recall last meeting, we were talking about going with some fiber network that's out of Nebraska or somewhere, not RG. And I was wondering why we aren't considering RG since we've already got all of the information and everything has been worked on so hard for that. And there's been a lot of work into that to just scrap it. So I was curious as to that.
Is that all on that subject?
Yeah, yeah, for that subject, yes.
Okay. The RFP selection process just did not fare it out, RG Fiber, in that process. But you'll hear later today an update on Spark Funding. RG Fiber, whom we supported for Spark Funding, was a grantee. We'll be talking about what their involvement will be with fiber in the city later today.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we get what's best for the citizens, not just the city. That's all I'm looking at. Second thing I have on my comment is that I brought to the attention of City Council, what was it, four weeks ago, I believe, that there were still weeds growing in city parks, or apparently they're run by different parts of the city. Mr. Hendershot, were you notified of those issues still?
I don't know what specifics, if you have specifics, let's get them out right now again.
Okay, it was in the baseball area. The weeds that are growing in the pool area and the parking lot areas and the fencing at the back diamond.
Mayor, I'll get ahold of Mr. Peel, Recreation Director. They're responsible for that area. Mr. Jensen, Mr. Hendershot, can you mask up, please? No, thank you.
And I had one more thing, Mr. Hendershot, to ask you.
Direct it to the council, please.
Direct it to the council. From what I understood, I talked to the neighbor across the street, and the desired goal or the projected finishing time of the goal to put drainage in was by the end of last month. And I'm just trying to see where we're at on that. Because it was supposed to have already been finished according to what the neighbor across the street says. I am not aware if that's accurate or correct, but that is just what he says.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Hendershot to get information on that and get that to you. If you're here after the meeting, we'll see if he has it available immediately. If not, I'll ask him to give you a call tomorrow or Monday.
Thank you.
Certainly. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Boswell. Mr. Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. A quick update, we were able to update our bylaws on the planning commission.
Excellent.
To address any attendance issues. So I believe through our next meeting, we'll be able to make any of those recommendations. On that same vein, I was just kind of curious of when we were going to start doing the interviewing and working through the amount of candidates that applied.
The application process closed, and the clerk has given me all of the applications. I am working through those to set up interviews.
Okay. Do you know how long that's going to be? I think it closed on September 11th.
I don't know. It's going to depend in part on how an applicant, if they're comfortable meeting in person, if they want to do it via Zoom. I would like to have all of the appointments made by the November meeting, but I may have to piecemeal it.
All right. All right, this kind of takes me back to that last conversation we all had about having one person do it. We closed September 11th. And now we're going to, it's going to take, you know, over two months to get those filled. It's a lot of meetings that we're missing. And I don't think it's out of line to have multiple people looking at candidates and having an opinion and bringing those to the council instead of having one person do it.
Okay. You also wanted to discuss the RFP?
No, I'm going to wait on that.
Okay, it's not coming up later today, Mr. Welsh, if there's something on the agenda.
All right, so I've been up here numerous times about that RFP, and I think everybody knows my opinion on it. And now that Mike has, you know, been selected with the Spark Funding and everything that we've done to back him on coming into the city, when are we going to cancel the RFP and not spend $350,000 that we don't have?
And that update will come later during reports. That is an ongoing process. This has been new information. We've actually got two companies that receive Spark Funding. Mr. Hendershot's going to provide an update as to where we're at right now. But he's going to provide it later. I mean, he's going to give us an update as to where we're at this week with conversations with those companies.
Okay, so we're still talking to the RFP, and we're still looking at spending $350,000 to do the city?
I think it's premature to make that statement, Mr. Welsh. There are a lot of moving pieces that have happened very quickly with this Spark Funding. And we've got conversations with both Kansas Fiber Net and with RG Fiber, understanding what their capabilities are and then what they're doing, and then understanding whether or not we still need to have another provider. The objective being to minimize taxpayer expense.
Okay, so my only viewpoint on that is that we don't spend any money on a separate fiber line for the city's city buildings. That would save us money ultimately.
Correct.
These guys come in and do their thing and not.
Correct.
Separate fiber line.
That's correct, that we would not have to spend money on that. Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mr. Bosch, welcome. I just saw your map about 10 minutes ago.
Fantastic. Thank you for the welcome. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the Spring Hill community. RG Fiber announced on October 2nd that we did get awarded a surge grant as part of the Spark Task Force. As part of our proposal, we continue to look for ways to advance our fiber network and provide service here in Spring Hill. So we propose to bring fiber internet in Spring Hill, both the Johnson County and Miami County sides. There's approximately 25 miles of network that we are going to build out. It will be all underground, 100% fiber, and it will bring fiber into the home and the business as well. Several studies have shown that property values tend to increase by about 3% once that fiber is installed. Part of the challenge was, according to the most recent FCC maps, that's off the 477 form data, Spring Hill was served with multiple broadband providers. However, over the past three years of interacting with several businesses and residents in town, we learned that the service has been misstated and misrepresented by these carriers. So RG Fiber created a Speed Truth Challenge and crowdsourced speed test results directly from residents and businesses. We had over 1,800 respond. So we can tell with statistical confidence that, at a 95% confidence, that 73% plus or minus 7% margin of error, homes and businesses in Spring Hill cannot get 25 down and 3 up. With our plan, 32% of the community will have access to up to 10 gig internet by the end of the year. That's 10 times faster than Google Fiber, making Spring Hill one of the fastest cities in the state of Kansas. All of RG Fiber's plans are pretty straightforward. They're all on our website. We have unlimited data, symmetrical service, fiber boxes include managed Wi-Fi that covers the entire home. And residential pricing starts at $59.95 a month. So we're looking forward to getting this project started. We anticipate having a permit by the end of this week. Materials are in route. So we look to have crews in town next week.
Mr. Bosch, I assure you, all my son heard was $59 and 10 gig. That's the, please stop saying 10 gig. He's going to make me get that. I don't think that's in the $59 range, so. When do you anticipate starting? I know you've requested your permits. I know that Mr. Burton is working through those as quickly as possible.
And they were actually waiting on our bond company. My understanding is our bond company delivered the bond this afternoon. It was kind of later in the afternoon.
Terrific, I see Mr. Burton shaking his head.
I anticipate getting a permit later this week. We do have materials inbound. We will be calling in locates, assuming everything runs without a hitch. We should be starting next week, sir.
Okay, terrific, terrific. We look forward to it. And I know that Kansas Fiber Net is also doing some work. And like I said previously, Mr. Hendershot's going to update everybody on conversations, both with your organization, with Kansas Fiber Net, as well as another carrier, so.
We do a lot of work with them.
That's terrific. One of the things that I want to point out as well is, you know, over the years, we've had a lot of work done that has been championed by Ms. Hughes on the broadband task force that I'd formed several years ago, as well as just the work that's been done on the staff side. But in addition to that, we have never stopped working with our state and federal officials in regard to what our broadband needs have been. So I want to make sure that we give some appropriate credit to Senator Baumgartner, to Representative Thomas, to Congresswoman Davids, as well as former Congressman Yoder, and Senator Moran. All of those people have met with me, have met with Mr. Hendershot. We've had regular conversations about our need. I know that there has been a lot of anxiety about broadband. But nobody, not one elected official, has given up on broadband for this community. And this is just another example of how working together, we can accomplish so much more. Mr. Bosch, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you.
In the report, are we going to get like a map or idea of what areas are going to get serviced and what?
I think ultimately, maps can come out. I don't know if you have anything in detail available for tonight.
Okay.
But when we get the report, make your request and we'll make sure. But I want to make sure that what we're releasing, those carriers are comfortable with what's being released as well, so.
I just, he hadn't mentioned some maps or something like that, so that's why I was asking.
All right, the floor remains open. Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the program and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. This takes us to the first of our formal council action items. This is item number 10, consideration of resolution 2020-R-20, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation bonds. Ms. Landis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today was the date of our temporary note sale and our bond sale. And I did put in front of you the adjusted numbers for the next three items. And I thought what we might do is talk first about the temporary notes. And that would be your item number 10. And I have Ben Hart with Baker Tilly is on the line with us, and Tyler Ellsworth from Kootok Rock also available. And they can talk a little bit about the process, the rating, the bond sale, or the note sale. And then we can tackle the number 10 item. And then we can move on to the bond sale and tackle numbers 11 and 12, if that's okay with you. Mr. Hart, would you like to introduce the temporary notes?
For the temporary notes, it was $3,090,000 in project proceeds we've bid out. We received five bids representing five banks. The winner of the bid was Country Club Bank with a true interest cost of 0.359, 0.359%. For today's market, that is, it has a fantastic rate. It's historically, it's one of the lowest I've ever seen, and they're doing this for 25 years. In order to, in order to go to market with these bonds, the city gets rated by independent credit rating agency Moody's, one of the top firms on Wall Street. And investors rely on that rating and their language and the review of the city. In that rating report that we received, we have language such as strong management, very strong budget flexibility, very strong liquidity, and adequate budget performance. So what that really means is you guys are at the top of your, top of your game when it comes to financial management, city management for that matter, on the financial side. Your budget flexibility shows the amount of fund balance that you maintain is consistent year to year. And it's also adequate enough, more than adequate enough, from what they say, in order to maintain a double A minus stable rating. And I know with the lockdown recession that happened earlier this year, a double A minus stable is somewhat hard to maintain. But the city's been able to do that. Very strong liquidity, your cash balances are strong, enabling you to weather any kind of storm, for that matter. We would recommend awarding the temporary notes to Country Club Bank at that 0.359%, Mayor.
Okay, so the item in front of us is the approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of $3,090,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, series 2020A, of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, for the purpose of temporarily financing the costs of certain internal improvements of the city.
Resolution number is 2020-R-20? Okay, Mayor, move to approve resolution number 2020-R-20.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500.
Thank you. The next two items are related to our general obligation advance refunding for the, for bonds. And Mr. Hart, would you like to discuss those, please?
Definitely. More good news, the city took outstanding bonds, bonds that are still payable on your balance sheet to the market, knowing that the rates were as well as they were. We had estimated savings of around $800,000, well over $800,000 to the city on these refunding bonds. In this case, we received three bids representing four banks. And you might wonder how that happens. There's one bid that encompassed two banks. The winner in this case is Commerce Bank at 1.492%. That's a taxable rate. So what that means is that taxable rate is usually up around 3% to 4%. You guys have got, again, achieved great rates on this. The savings actually calculated out to $944,000, or an average of $62,000 annually. And that's on the refunding bonds. The same language applied to the credit rating report on Moody's than it did for the temporary note. So with that, I would recommend awarding the long-term bonds to Commerce Bank.
Okay, so our first item is number 11. That is recommended approval of a resolution prescribing the form and detail of and authorizing the delivery of $6,195,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2020B, which are taxable under federal law of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance of the city.
Mayor, move to approve resolution number 2020-R-21.
Second.
Mayor and Council, I'm sorry, this is Tyler Ellsworth with Kootok Rock.
Mr. Ellsworth, hold on just a moment. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And now you can go.
Thank you, sir. The, as a procedural matter, the ordinance should come before the bond resolution.
I'm very sorry, we have those backwards. What would you like to do?
So you, is the motion? If I'm willing, should we withdraw the motion?
I move to withdraw the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend the agenda reversing the orders of items 11 and 12?
I move to revise the formal action as stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we have consideration of ordinance number 2020-17, Ms. Landis.
Thank you, I apologize for that.
All right.
Our recommendation here would be approval of ordinance 2020-17, authorizing the issuance and delivery of $6,195,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2020B, taxable under federal law of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on the bonds as they become due.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance number 2020-17.
Second, we have a motion and a second. It's an ordinance. We'll vote by roll. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll of the council, please?
Mr. Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Ordinance carries 500, and this takes us to consideration of resolution 2020-R-21 that has been previously introduced. Would anyone be willing to advance a motion?
Move to approve resolution number 2020-R-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That was motion by Leighton, second by Eckert. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. He was just split second.
I know.
Nano second.
I have to abstain because of my relationship with Congress.
I am so, I am so sorry.
All right.
Abstain?
Yes.
Motion carries 401. Potential for a conflict of interest is the reason for the abstention.
Thank you very much.
I think if you sharpen your elbow a little bit, you'll do it next time.
Nice kick him in the shins.
This takes us to item number 13, consideration of agreement to relocate valve and blowdown stacks at 199th and Ridgeview. Mr. Miller can't be with us tonight. Mr. Hendershot will stand in his shoes tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. As we worked through the utility relocation in connection with the roundabout at 199th and Ridgeview, one of the companies that required an agreement for, to relocate some of their facilities was Atmos Gas. Because there are no private easements involved in this, Atmos has agreed to allow the city to work directly with NPL Construction rather than an agreement with Atmos Gas, who would then hire NPL. This results in about a 30% savings for us. We do have a contract with them, an agreement with them, in the amount, or a proposed agreement in the amount of $29,970.32. This is to relocate a blowdown valve and some other equipment in relation to that project. It is Mr. Miller's recommendation, as well as mine, that we allow the mayor to enter into this agreement with NPL Construction to relocate these facilities.
Mayor, move to approve the contract with NPL as stated.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 500.
Thank you.
This takes us to item number 14, consideration of approval of acceptance of bid for conceptual design of the Justice Center. Chief Henson, you have the floor.
Good evening. As you may recall, during the CIP review, the governing body approved a referendum for 2021 for the Justice Center. Mentioned during that time is that our current configuration of the police department has, and of court, has reached a maximum capacity. In order to sustain the department's current organizational growth, more space is needed. This includes locker space, booking facilities, evidence storage, parking and office space. As we continue to add personnel to meet the demands dictated by the growth of the city, the need will become more urgent. Court is held at City Hall within the council chambers. The room limits witness testimony, creates safety challenges, and has limited seating for large dockets. City staff, which includes Jim Hendershot, Pat Burton, and myself, and Dan Miller was, was part of this, this group as well. But he was unfortunately not able to meet on October 6th. But he, on September 23rd, sent out RFQs. They had until October, he sent it to eight firms, and they had until October 6th to submit their quotes. We met on October 6th to select the best firm based on their responses. One of the, one of the things that we asked for is that we limit the scope of services and deliverables proposed to be provided to achieve the best value within a $20,000 budget. to be provided to achieve the best value within a twenty thousand dollar budget. There were four firms who submitted proposals, they were GLMV, Architectures, SFS, HWA, and Finkel Williams. All four proposals came under the twenty thousand dollar budget requirement. However, GLMV offered the best value to achieve the goals listed in the RFQ. Those goals included proposed staffing plan, schedule of work plan, system concept and solutions proposed, responsiveness to study objectives, programming and space needs, estimated project costs, which includes both facility and soft costs, and a visual concept design. Additionally, um, I contacted the reference, references regarding GLMV and Paul Michelle. They found Paul to be knowledgeable, easy to work with, open, flexible, and willing to provide alternatives to meet budgetary needs, while at the same time, holding firm when necessary to avoid mistakes in the process of design that could have long-term negative effects of the building. When asked, all references said Paul and his team met the required deadlines. Any delay was usually a result of another outside entity. Um, GM, uh, GLMV's approach recognizes the risk reward factor in this first step to gain funding for the project. As a result, they will complete the need assessment, cost assessments, and conceptual design scope for the standard reimbursable expenses only. This includes mileage for travel, printing, and duplication of expenses, shipping costs, and other project necessary expenses dictated by the final project scope not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars. We have confirmed with GLMV that this is the correct quote, and, and ensured their work will meet our desired needs for this first phase. I do have Paul Michelle on the phone, uh, to assist with any questions that she may have. Um, what we're asking, uh, is the acceptance of the quote and grant authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with GLMV Architecture to be presented at the next council meeting to consult and provide a concept design for the Justice Center.
Yeah, I do have questions, that's alright. Fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Um, that is, if they were at an hourly rate of anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred dollars, I mean, we're talking, that's barely sixteen hours worth of work. I don't know how you're gonna get a needs assessment, a floor plan, a conceptual design, a cost estimate, and all that done in sixteen hours. I'm trying to figure this out, how you're actually going to get this for six, you know, less than twenty hours worth of work, easily less than twenty hours. When that usually is easily way over forty, if more close to, depending on what you're doing for the level of detail, so. Cause here's my concern, this is what is the order of magnitude of what you're doing for a cost estimate on this? Cause usually it's a high-level order of magnitude, it could be plus or minus twenty percent, so that's my concern. We go out to a program for a referendum, and it's not the right amount of money, and we do a referendum and it's not the amount of money that it needs to be, so I have all these questions and concerns.
I understand, Mr. Michelle's on the phone, Mr. Michelle, this is Mayor Ellis, that was Councilmember Leighton, whose question is, I think essentially, if you would walk us through exactly what you anticipate providing for the bid you, you submitted.
Certainly, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm assuming you can, you can all hear me just fine, could you confirm?
We can, thank you.
Excellent, and I will apologize, I'm, I'm coming off a little bit of a respiratory, um, thing, so I may, I maybe, uh, have, have a cough here or there, um, but, um, I just want to just warn you ahead of time. Um, again, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, again, you know, to, to Chief Henson's point, we, we are recognizing the risk reward, um, proposition here. We understand that this is a, uh, the very first and, and most critical step in, um, planning for and the ultimate design and construction of, you know, really the most complex law enforcement tool available to your officers. To that end, we understand that the, the risk really is coming in the form of, will the voters support this measure? And, and we share in that risk with you, and we want to be a partner to the city. So while we are, are asking for only reimbursable expenses according to, uh, you know, to our proposal, that does not in any way mean that we are going to be shorting you on the hours taken, um, that are gonna be taken, uh, necessary to produce a really professional, full needs assessment study and concept design. We are highly motivated to do your work, uh, we have the expertise, and, uh, necessary. I personally touched over, uh, you know, well over a million square feet of, of public safety architecture of course of my, my twenty-one-year career. It's been the focus of my, um, my career. Uh, the vast majority of my, uh, of those twenty-one years have been spent doing police, court, the occasional fire station or city hall. Um, so th- this, again, highly motivated to do the work. Um, as far as our process that we will undertake, um, we will, we will, uh, initially meet with a group of key stakeholders. Um, and that, that group of stakeholders is really good to be defined by the city and the police department and the court. Um, we are, uh, typically, it's command staff, uh, members of individual groups within the department, municipal court, any interested, you know, you know, you know, interested, um, city staff, elected officials. We can even involve some of the public, uh, if, in, in that process, if we'd like to get some input from them as it relates to, you know, what the public, you know, has aspirations for this facility. Certainly, this is a community, uh, amenity as well. So we're gonna go through a process of about two days probably onsite. Um, we're also gonna be evaluating the existing facility and, and documenting the space and the utilization for that facility. Um, and that's really for the purpose of documenting in the study, what, um, where the deficiencies are, where you're short on space, where your facility's not meeting current standards, where you might have some accessibility issues. You know, we're gonna look at it, um, with a very objective eye, so we can demonstrate the, you know, how, once we've established the needs, how your current facility are not meeting your actual needs. We're gonna be also visiting about likely population growth. Um, the chief has already, uh, been, been working through, uh, likely growth based on available data. You know, we're gonna have to determine, are we going to program this for ten years, fifteen years, twenty years? Cause we want to make sure there's enough room in the facility for growth. Um, and growth in the right spaces, you can't just tack on an addition down the road, um, and, and have a bunch of people from different parts of the, you know, police courts, uh, divisions just plop down in a, in a, in an addition, so we need to, we need to plan for growth in the right areas also. Um, we're also gonna be discussing adjacencies. It's very critical that the people are next to, you know, people within the facility are, are next to each other to do their most efficient work. We know that the payroll, um, for law enforcement departments is typically the highest budget item every year. Whatever we can do to create an efficient, um, planning and design concept will pay dividends to the city in efficiency and, and payroll dollars spent to where your staff can utilize their time in the wisest, most, uh, most beneficial way to their, their citizens of Spring Hill. Once we, once we collect that information, we're gonna go back to the office and using a database, um, that we have for law enforcement facilities around, you know, the country, we're gonna look at national standards and we're gonna assign some space to each area of the building, each room, each office, each work area, each storage space, um, that are gonna be based on standards, but it's also gonna be based on what we hear during information gathering. We are going to apply our standards, but we're gonna adapt them for Spring Hill's unique needs. Um, we're gonna look at how the building might stack, how it might organize. Um, and then ultimately, um, as we have, as we start to have a planning concept, we're gonna be looking at cost, likely cost for that, that building. Now, what's gonna be extremely important is that we look at this from the standpoint of what does it take for a law enforcement to be built, or law enforcement facility to be built? Um, again, we have a database of information, we've got, um, real-world cost, um, for public safety, uh, facilities around the country that have been built, so we know what these facilities cost and, and, um, that also comes from planning decisions, but also from seeing these things built around the country. So, also on, as part of the team that we proposed is our full-time in-house cost estimator. He's a professional cost estimator, this is all that he does day in and day out. He's gonna be involved as, as it relates to what is the current cost, uh, climate out there as it relates to labor, materials, et cetera. So, um, and then ultimately, we're gonna have a study document that is going to summarize all of these decisions. Spaces needed, critical adjacencies, parking needs, um, you know, everything down to the cost with some recommendations as it also relates back to the, um, the, you know, the current facility and the deficiencies. The next step after that will be to, be to sit down and, and start to work on design with you. Um, we'll do a conceptual design that will include floor plans, exterior reviews. We have rendering and animation artists in-house that will, will be able to, um, provide flybys and, and artist renderings to also help sell this project to your voters. Um, at the end of the day, you know, we want to provide a third, you know, third-party national expertise uh, opinion of what your needs are, based on standards adapted to you, to your unique, uh, situation in Spring Hill. So, uh, again, I don't want, um, you to feel like we are not going to be spending the needed time, we absolutely are. Um, we just recognize that risk to reward proposition that is here, we understand that there's the, the, a good possibility. Um, you know, if, if you guys are happy with, with our performance on the study, we, we have a, a good chance of doing your project down the road. Uh, and we're willing to invest our time and our energy and our expertise and our knowledge, um, to help Spring Hill achieve their goals. Um, we want to be a partner and, um, we want to share, uh, share in that risk with you. So, um, that's generally speaking, our outlook on this project and why we proposed it the way we have. Um, uh, with that, I'll take any other questions you might have, if I need to clarify anything further, I'm more than happy to.
Well, yeah, I still have questions, because, um, that is a lot of work to sit there and say for fifteen hundred dollars. I know what billable rates go for, that's way more, even if it was a hundred dollars an hour, that's way more than sixteen hours worth of work.
Right, but they're not billing by the hour.
I get that, they're doing a lump sum, I'm just saying.
No, they're not doing a lump sum.
On, on page ten, they.
That's, okay, that's what I'm trying to get through, fifteen hundred dollars, what is the cost, what is the total cost that they're gonna get to?
Fifteen hundred dollars is for their projected expenses, the rest of the work they're doing under a business model, I presume, that hopefully positions them to be able to get the work if it passes.
Okay, so they're doing this pro bono.
I don't know that, those are the words that they want to use, but theoretically.
Okay, I'll rephrase that.
For cost only.
This is a complete loser lead for them.
Lost leader.
Lost leader, however you want to phrase it.
Um, it's a re- reimbursable expenses only cap, fifteen hundred dollars.
But that's where I'm at is, is, okay, so they realize this is a complete.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've, I've asked the chief to clarify, Mr. Hendershot and Mr. Burton and Chief Henson, I think when the bids were opened, when they came to talk to me this week, said, "We thought perhaps they left a zero off." They did not, so they have, they have clarified this.
Have you done this for another city?
I'll be honest with you, I have not. Um, but that, I.
Done this work.
No.
I've done this work.
You've done this work, have you done this proposed, no cost, other than the fifteen hundred dollar expenses?
I have not, sir.
Why are you doing that with us?
Honestly, I, this, this is a, a project type that I, uh, is near and dear to me. Um, you know, I, I believe that we are extremely qualified to do your work. Um, it was a, something that we were motivated to do to attempt to, to get the work.
So.
And at the end of the day, yes, it is, it is, you could call it pro bono, but we will be tracking our time. We will be taking this out of our, our marketing budget that we have as a firm. Um, if it is more, if you would be comfortable, more, the more comfortable having a report of the hours that we spend on this, uh, project, we will be tracking every single hour and I'd be more than happy to give you a, an accounting of our time on the project.
I'm just trying to think through this because, uh, I, I have concerns that we may not get the amount of time that we need put into this if it starts going into where it's a very time-consuming effort by your firm, and it starts really digging into more than what you were expecting into that, and then we start getting.
They're gonna be.
Deliverables.
They're gonna be held to the RFP, just like anybody else.
I get that, but I'm just, I'm expressing concerns, I'm just saying.
Um. I, I understand, but their references have checked out. This is a new model for them, I, my expectation is, is they'll be held to the same standard if we were paying them fifteen hundred or fifteen thousand.
I think it's a great business model, to be honest with you, I mean, they're going to try their best to, to sell the project, to get the voters on board so they can get the work further on, so that they can come back to us and say, you know, "We helped you get this done to a point where we want to be your firm to put this into place."
Okay, so this is the other question I was gonna have based off of that, is, once we go through the, our, you know, the, the referendum, and they, it gets, let's, I'm, I'm supposing it gets passed, but I'm optimistic, okay? Typically, we have gone back out for bid with an RFP process. At that point, are we still going to proceed, or is that still the expectation by this governing body that we're still? I just want to make sure, and I want them to hear that too.
We can't violate our own purchasing power.
I just, I want everybody to hear that also, I mean, that we're still gonna go through that, and I just want to make sure that it's publicly clear to them also that we're gonna go through that. I don't want to have it thought that just because they did this here, that they're automatically gonna get selected after a referendum for that.
Correct, but I'm sure that their proposal would be, "Hey, we did it all for you."
Right.
I mean, we know it best, cause we started it.
And that generally drives the cost down and certainly makes them more competitive.
What I would write at the top.
Well, I'm gonna be honest, I mean, I've been in twenty-five years with very large firms, very large architecture firms dealing with them, and I, this is a very, um, unorthodox, let's say, approach, and so I have had cons, that's why I have concerns about it.
But I think you're having an unorthodox time right now.
Right.
Building for large-scale, commercial-type, uh, industry right now is just not, it's in flux. You've got a lot of retail out there, you've got a lot of buildings, you've got people moving in to other, you know, to, to unoccupied spaces rather than building their own. I mean, y- you can see why this would be an intriguing model for us a- and for them.
And I would anticipate if it ends up working out exactly as they suspect that it will, GLMV will not be the only one offering this model in the future.
Correct, I would think so.
I, I understand and I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Leighton, I, I don't want to discount that.
Oh, I'm, I know you're not.
To making certain that the taxpayers at fifteen hundred, a dollar fifty or fifteen million are getting what they're paying for is absolutely essential.
That's why I'm just being very questioned, you know, hi, asking a lot of questions about this, and make everybody sure that they are eyes wide open about what is going on. So, I mean, so the motion would be is to accept their bid for basically no monetary cost other than a fifteen hundred dollars reimbursable expenses? That would be my motion.
Would they be less stated, I guess? I'm sorry? No, I'm sorry.
Well, I've got a motion, so I'll have to call for a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I just have one thing, chief, just to let you know, I hope this works at fifteen hundred dollars. Um, but I've expressed a concern about the timing, so that's where I'm at with this, nothing against the police department or this job. It's the timing, so I'd be voting no for it then.
What do you mean, just so I understand, I'm not discounting, I understand, what do you mean?
Timing when we're doing this, I think I expressed to the mayor, I'd like to see it weighed.
Mr. Owen would prefer that it be more robust financial times.
Yeah.
Okay, you're, okay, I didn't know if you meant like.
No, no, I, I hope it works and the fifteen hundred made me shake my head too, I wonder if it's gotta be a mistake.
Right.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion carries three two zero. Thank you very much. This takes us to, oh, Mr. Michelle, thank you as well.
Thank you very much.
This takes us to item number fifteen, deferral of withholding the employee portion of social security taxes. Ms. Jones, you have the floor, welcome. For those of you who don't recall, this is our human resources manager, Mona Keisha Jones.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Great, so, um, I am here to talk about deferral of withholding the employee portion of the social security taxes. As you can see from the review sheet and supporting documents that I sent, this is based off of the executive memorandum from the president and then the information subsequent to that from the Secretary of Treasury. And without reading completely through the review sheet, uh, summary of that would be that the employees pay six point two percent of their wages on each pay period towards social security tax. And this is a option to defer that withholding and then start. And then starting in January of next year through April of twenty twenty-one, paying that portion back to. Basically, the IRS for taxes. And so if we defer that amount, we would have to be doing it for all of our employees. And so I'm here today to have the council determine whether or not that is something that we should opt in to do. If we do do that, there are several cons, well, potential ramifications of deferring that amount being taken out. If we have employees leave, the city is then responsible for paying back the portion that that employee would have paid. We then have additional legal fees that would be incurred because of the potential to do. Individual contracts with each of our employees to ensure that we are not violating any of the Kansas Wage Payment Act provisions. There's also the additional time from staff to be put in to ensure that our system is gonna accommodate that. Because if we do opt to do it, it's not a one-fits-all. It would be every pay period, making sure that the employees meet those provisions. Because this is for employees that make four thousand dollars or less on a bi-weekly pay period. So we would have to take the time to assess that and make sure that we're following those guidelines. So. I know that's pretty short, but I know that I put a lot into the material. So if you have any questions, I'd rather just answer those versus going through this.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, what what is what is the general consensus of the employees?
I have had a couple of employees reach out to me and they have definitely stated they would not want to have this done to them. It would be different if the deferral was a forgiveness, meaning that we don't have, they don't have to pay it back. That is definitely some extra money and extra income coming into them. But the fact that it is deferral where they have to pay it back, you're essentially going to be. You know, doubling what they pay going forward to make up for that. So it's not really a benefit in the end. So the employees that have come to me have opted. To say no, but again, my comment to them was that. Thank you for your your uh feedback, but this is a decision that the council needs to make.
Though we don't have employees coming to you saying, yes, they want this.
Do not have that.
I think there's a significant risk to taxpayers here. I think there's also a significant longer-term impact to employees. Comes time to pay the piper.
Yep.
Yes.
So your recommendation is to opt out?
My recommendation is to opt out.
Okay. There are three different options would entertain a motion.
Mayor move to opt out of the deferral withholding the employee portion of the social security taxes for the remainder of the year for all eligible employees.
Second. We have a motion and a second. That's motion by Leighton, second by Owen. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor.
Aye.
Carries five, zero, zero.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next item is holiday schedule for city council meetings. Mr. Hendershot.
Thank you again. As we look forward or ahead into November and December. And this al- always presents some challenges as far as meetings. Uh, of the governing body and meeting the expectations of. Developers of our residents, of our taxpayers and the day-to-day business of City Hall. As you know, our second second meetings in November and December traditionally fall in the holiday. Times so that those meetings normally are canceled. I am requesting that this year. Well, let me back up. In addition, in October, there are five Thursdays. So we have the potential between our second meeting in October till the first meeting in January, which is January the fourteenth. To only have two meetings within that time. And I I don't know that that is. Is appropriate to for the amount of business that we have. So what I'm proposing is that. The Thursday, November twelfth meeting would be a regular scheduled meeting. That would go as planned. That we could would set aside Tuesday, November twenty-fourth for the potential for a special meeting. Thursday, December tenth would be the regular scheduled meeting, first meeting in December. And Tuesday, December twenty-second would also be set aside then for the potential for a special meeting in December. Mayor, I have nothing else. That that is my recommendation for the meeting schedule for holidays.
I would actually recommend that that special meeting be set aside to December fifteenth. I know that still pushes us a little bit and if we had to, we can always. Call another special meeting. My concern is that week of December twenty-second falls in as a travel week for a lot of people. So it might be better and and I think fairer to the council to to ask everybody to hold a day. That they would hold December fifteenth potentially. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. And then obviously, if we do need a special meeting, that's always subject to call and availability of.
Absolutely.
So. Okay. This is typically just handled by consensus. Is that my recollection, Mr. Jenkins? Yeah, so. If no one has any particular issue with this, that will be our schedule.
We'll proceed and thank you.
Those are potential meetings. Those are not scheduled meetings. Okay, this takes us to our one and only discussion items, ethics, policy ordinance. Mr. Jenkins, you have the floor.
Mayor, members of the council, Frank Jenkins, city attorney. This matter has been before you very briefly at the last meeting where we distributed the proposed ethics policy. Uh, you have before you, I've distributed on the dais that copy of that draft of the. Policy. I would state that this is supplemental to the existing rules and regulations that are in place. Both by state statute, purchasing policy of the city and also the Spring Hill employee handbook. The foregoing that I described are rather limited in scope and some of them have no penalties. Therefore, it is recommended that the governing body consider the adoption of the comprehensive code of ethics before you. The ordinance is based in part upon codes adopted by the city of Lenexa, city of De Soto. I will read to you one section. Not to belabor it because it's a nine-page document. But one section that I think is important and relevant to the city council when it happens repeatedly. When we have a matter coming forth with respect to contracts. And if you'll bear with me, I'll just read the section. An interest in contractor transactions. No public officer or employee having the power or duty to perform an official act. Or actions related to a contract or transaction, which is or may be the subject of an official act or action. Other city council shall number one, have or thereafter acquire an interest in such track, contract or transaction. Two, have an interest in any business entity representing, advising or appearing on behalf of. Whether paid or unpaid, any person involved in such contractors, transaction. Three, have solicited or accepted present or future employment with a person or business entity involved in such contract or transaction. Four, have solicited, accepted or granted a present or future gift, favor, service or thing of value. From or to a person involved in such contract or transaction. This prohibition against gifts or favors shall not apply to. One, an occasional non-peculiar gift insignificant in value. Some jurisdictions put a specific dollar amount in that. But this is just the test of insignificant value. Two, an award publicly presented in recognition of public service. Or three, any gift which would have been offered or given to he or she if he were not an officer or employee. The next paragraph I'll read and then wind this up. A public officer or employee does not violate the provisions of this subsection. When he or she has such an interest, but abstains from any action, participation or vote. Involving the contract or transaction and properly disclose such interest. Any person abstaining shall upon realization of such contract. And as soon as reasonably possible, state that he or she has conflict, leave the room until all discussion. And action on the transaction has concluded. Other than open public meetings at which the recording officer or board member is selected as secretary. Shall reflect any such abstention and departure from their proceedings as applicable. Officers or employees shall disclose any interest to the human resource manager or city administrator. And shall not participate in any RFP process, selection, contract or any sort. Whether by RFP or upon governing body action or any recommendation concerning the selection or retention of any entity. I'll emphasize. This governing body has done an outstanding job with respect to any issues that are being addressed here. This is not directed at the city council to try to remedy anything. This is a boilerplate provision that's up to you to consider. Planning commissions, sometimes I know they'll recuse themselves from participating or voting. But they will not leave the room. There's a debate that. Among the legal circles is whether or not someone should actually leave the room because they're thinking their presence would have some influence by their being there, but. I just wanted to point that out. There's about six or seven or eight other items I can cover. But I don't want to belabor this because you have had a copy. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I have questions. Uh, I'm, there are just a couple of areas where. I think it could be, it it's a little broad and. It could hurt an employee. I I just, I I'm not so worried about elected officials and I'm not so worried about our department heads. But an employee who takes a job at a later company and then is asked by that company. To be a sales representative in our region or some other kind of thing could easily be affected by. F, which is appearances before the city. You know, they would, for two years, they wouldn't be allowed to try to sell that new product or or come to the city as part of the contract negotiations. Or something out and that that employee could have worked in a completely different area. It could have. Could have, you know, not not been involved or or be in any way. No advance that that would be their their job title later on. And so I really feel that just those couple of areas we could. Look at for maybe. Making that a little bit less broad. So those employees wouldn't be affected in their in their their future employment. I mean, they weren't involved in the contract negotiations. They weren't involved with that company when they were here. Then they should be excluded from that, I think.
Are you talking about section?
F.
Four? Code of mistake.
Page five.
Yeah, yes, page five.
Underneath section four.
So. Appearances, right. And then incompatible service. Um, it really doesn't say how we decide if it's incompatible or if they can just get permission. You know, maybe they say, hey, I'm gonna take this second job and we say yes or no. So he doesn't come back to bite them later. You know, that would be great for E. Just that kind of recognition that they're doing it and we say. No problem.
Mr. Jenkins, why don't we tighten up the language a little bit? You submit a another recommendation. We will take this up. Why don't we take this up the first meeting in November and then that gives us. The second meeting in October to have some additional discussion.
On F, did I hear you say a time period on F?
I do believe it says two years when you go farther down into your later interests in K. I assume that was also applied to other areas, but yes, later interest. So if you were an employee, regular employee. And you left your employment with the city, they're saying that you can't appear on behalf of that new employer with relations to the city for two years.
Their F and F was appearance.
Yes, but.
Back into each other.
K is also later interest, so it it kind of.
It it, may I? The appearance was directed at a situation where an employee or elected official would like to appear. On behalf of someone regarding a matter. Uh, the they say you cannot do that. That's prohibited except. Uh, they can represent themselves. His spouse, minor children regarding a personal matter before any city agency, board, commission, council or miss. Of course, so it's talking about the person wanting to make an appearance.
Right.
I would suggest, Mr. Jenkins, reevaluating that in totem and 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 probably just striking it. These are, these types of of. Not what appear to be non-competition, non-solicitation style clauses are largely disfavored by the courts. Judges blue line these things all the time. It's. We're not in an environment that is so competitive. Nor are there people up here that are frankly so weak-minded that somebody appearing in front of them who recently was employed by them would be swayed in some way. So reevaluate that. Give consideration to just striking those provisions in total.
It'll be done.
Does that address the concern?
You you were speaking on F and K, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah.
That whole section. Yes.
Is there any other sections underneath that you expressed?
Uh, just the incompatible service in E. I just would like them to be able to say if they disclose it and we approve it, there should be some kind of. A process to get them around that so that we don't come to them later after they've taken a job and we say to them, hey, surprise, we think that's incompatible. You know. I don't wanna, I don't wanna surprise our employees in any way. They have all opportunities they can.
Right. To your point, I mean. A lot of that probably is covered or should be covered a lot of times in our personnel policies. If if there's something in there, so I don't know why we necessarily have to have it here.
Add reference to.
And that's my point. I don't, or maybe it just gets struck and out of this too.
If it's there, I mean, I just, that that was my only concern. I don't want to surprise the employee that. We look back and then say, hey, you know, now you have to quit one of your jobs or something.
Yeah, I also just don't think we need to duplicate something else if it's in the personnel policy.
All right. Okay. Bringing the draft back at the next meeting, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. This takes us to announcements and reports. Just a reminder, the chamber annual dinner is on November tenth. It is both an in-person and virtual model, so if you've not had the opportunity to look at that and. Let the city clerk know whether or not you're attending. If you could do that forthwith. Obviously, she would need to send out notice if a quorum would be be present at that. Other than that, I have nothing else. Mr. Owen.
One thing, it, Mr. Hendershot, maybe if we could look into microphones for like our attorney. If we have the option of doing something to, maybe a wireless mic for some people. I know we're in an unusual situation, but.
We've already begun that.
Perfect, great.
Yeah, that's that's, we're looking at it. I can add that in.
All right, great. And then I'm looking forward to your report on the broadband.
Thank you.
That's all. All right, Mr. Leighton. I'm just kinda curious to see how this all pans out with that, uh, moving forward with that architect on this. Possible police station and. Chief, I've been involved in a couple of these space needs and I do have some documents that you might want to have where we've looked at. Multiple enforcement, law enforcement facilities, so instead of starting from scratch, you might have a basis to begin.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Hughes.
I just wanna say. How proud I am of Melanie and the finance department. I mean. That was to me, I don't know if anybody else heard it, but a glowing review. About our financials and our risk management and our grade that. I know you championed over the last several years getting that grade up to eight, you know, the double, is it double A minus? Is that correct? Yes. You did a great job.
That actually extends to all departments for belt tightening. That extends to the governing body also for the suspension. Of spending the moment that we understood what the pandemic held for us. The the fact that we maintained that rating and I believe that it was our Baker Tilly representative that made that comment. The fact that we were able to maintain that rating and achieve such a low interest rate during this time was unusual. And that is a direct reflection on the fiscal responsibility of the city as a whole, so. I I want to, I want to spread that congratulations on. There are departments out there that are doing a heck of a lot more with heck a lot less. And I want to make sure that they get credited for that as well. But I also want to make sure that Melanie's not taking the hit for that from other departments. Because that is a, that is a global decision that we've made in order to protect the taxpayers, so. Thank you for that. Mr. Record.
Ms. Garrity, I will get with you about that chamber dinner. We'll discuss that. Uh, also looking, looking through the report recently, we have a long-distance bill. Does anyone know? I know sometimes long-distance bills pop up and get us for certain things. Can you explain that or do you have an answer? If you don't today, that's fine.
Um, I can get you some more details on it, but is your question, why do we have long distance or is it?
Why do we have long distance? I can't remember when I saw that.
Uh, yes, so it is part of a billing that we get for, we do still have some landlines. And it is associated with that for things like fax machines. Believe it or not, long distance is still a thing in that world. So I can get you more information on that. I can even go back to the bills and see how much we actually pay for that monthly, but it's part of it and it's been an ongoing.
It just dropped.
Expense. Mm-hmm.
Well, that is it, Mr. Mayor. Nothing further?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Graves. We'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Hendershot.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things before I get into the broadband. Kate Schupert, our public information officer, has been spearheading our census drive activities. Uh, we were notified today, I believe, that Spring Hill is now completely counted. That the Kansas is total enumeration at ninety-nine point nine percent. We had a self-response rate of just a little over eighty percent and then the door-to-door in-person, the follow-ups, canvassing, those have been completed. Um, so census activities in Spring Hill and in Johnson County in general, uh, by this information have been very positive. Um, there's, there remains uh, discussions at the federal level and through the courts as to when the census may actually officially be over. Um, much related because of the pandemic. Um, but it could be lasting through the end of October, but Spring Hill, as in much of the metro area, um, we have been very responsible and my thanks to our residents and our citizens for reaching out and taking part in that census. Uh, participated in a Zoom meeting on Tuesday related to cars. Our cars project submittal for Webster Street was approved by the TRC committee. And that now goes to the Board of County Commissioners on October the twenty-second for final approval for funding for Webster Street repair and resurfacing in twenty-twenty-one. Again, that'll go back to the Board of County Commissioners on the twenty-second. Normally they have invited um, key staff members to come and speak on behalf of those cities at the Board of County Commission meetings this year because of the pandemic, they are not doing that, so I will not be attending that. Okay, related to broadband. At our last council meeting, um, following the mayor's announcements of the district attorney's investigation, then I was directed to contact ALO Communications and regenerate those conversations with them related to the RFP. I've done that. Uh, we've had some communications with them. They do have two projects that are consuming an enormous amount of their time. And beginning next week, we will get into earnest in con, in conversations with ALO. However, as we have learned in the next, in the, just the past couple of days, this is an ever-changing, almost by the hour environment of broadband. And because of Spark Funding, we now know that RG Fiber, as well as Kansas Fiber Net have, uh, been granted five, uh, funding to come into Spring Hill. We have had conversations with Mr. Bosch with RG Fiber, um, as well as with representatives from Kansas Fiber Net. They have all submitted their permit applications. We are fast-tracking those just as quickly as we can to get those done. Excuse me. We've also had communications with a third party, which I don't know that it hurts to. Um, yeah, I don't know why. People's Telecommunition, Telecommunications out of La Cine was not awarded Spark Funding, however, they are extremely interested in Spring Hill and are looking at a business plan to also bring uh, expanded broadband and internet, uh, through fiber into our community. So because of the Spark Funding generation of excitement, um, there's a potential that we could have in the very near future, uh, up to three more companies coming in, coming into Spring Hill. Mr. Bosch made, made the correct statement that with this funding, um, those funds have to be expended by the end of the year. So these companies are moving extremely fast. In the case of Kansas Fiber Net, they were awarded ten different cities, ten grants for ten different cities. So they are really moving fast. Um, and they are, they are coming to town. Uh, what this means regarding our RFP and with ALO, it remains to be seen. Are there partnership, uh, potentials there? Uh, that include ALO? Absolutely, there could be. Nothing is off the board at this time. We're trying our best to determine what is the best for the city of Spring Hill for everyone in general and what that might look like. It, you know, there's, there are just all kinds of potentials out there that, uh, uh, may involve one or more or multiple companies working together in these partnerships. That's what we're looking for.
One of the things that, Mr. Hendershot, Mr. Burton and I discussed earlier this week as well, Kansas Fiber Net is not actually providing gigabit capable service to consumers. Their grant is specific to provide those services for healthcare, for government entities. Was there another category in there?
Um, schools.
I'm sorry?
Banks, they also.
Oh, banks and, yeah, financial institutions and education. Um, that doesn't meet the requirements for waiver of permit fees. And one of the things that I had discussed is if we need to make amendments, I wanted to present back to the council the possibility that we may be seeking an amendment to that to waive those permit fees for entities that are providing service at that level and are doing that service under a federal grant or a state grant with federal tax dollars. The issue that I have is collecting a fee on taxpayer dollars. It, it doesn't make sense to me. These, these Spark Dollars are part of federal funds that all of us have contributed to, to turn around and then charge a permit fee on top of that, which really is another tax. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me and I don't want to do anything to slow the process down, so. City staff is going to work on that and if need be, we'll bring back, uh, we'll bring back a, an ordinance to amend.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Hendershot? You can see these are conversations that have happened throughout this week. There are certainly some, um, questions still outstanding. I would ask that if these maps are available to be placed online, that we do that. Um, and, and, and do that with some explanation as to what that means.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Peterman, is that Mr. Peterman back there?
Are we paying all these companies three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come in?
No, these are taxpayer-funded grants that were issued under the CARES Act.
So nobody's getting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Not at the moment, no. Mr. Eckert?
Thank you. Mr. Hendershot, you talked about a map, you talked about zones. Uh, and then you talked about permitting. So it, explain to me, help me understand a little bit about permitting. I mean, when you, when you're going to put in something in the ground, you get a permit, do you get a permit per ten feet? For a thousand feet, per section, per block?
Okay.
How, how do, help me understand that.
Okay.
How that works?
Our right-of-way permit, uh, that was approved, um, by, by council approximately a year ago, um, breaks that down into a per parcel and it also then, if it's a larger project, I believe it's per thousand feet. Uh, and there is a fee for that. However, those are the one, that is the exact fee that Mayor Ellis is referring to that has been waived if the company is providing gigabit service to residents. Um, in the case, as Mr. Ellis pointed out, in the case of Kansas Fiber Net, they do not provide service to res, that's not their market. Okay? Um, so they, they, under the current program would not be eligible for that permit fee waiver. And we've explained that to them. However, if someone was to come in and to tie into their system and reach out, I'm sorry, reach out into the, the residential areas, that's, that's something that we'd absolutely look at. Um, in, in the case of RG Fiber, he is by his plan uh, providing, I believe his, his number that he used was about thirty percent coverage of the residential uh, customers in town. Mr. Bosch, are you still here? Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, so that's absolutely something that would fall into that free, that permit fee waiver because he's providing gigabit service availability to those customers.
And Mr. Eckert, on that permit waiver that I had proposed, it was June or July of, of nineteen, really what the contemplation was is, is we don't want to waive a permit, right-of-way permit fee for somebody who merely just wants to come through town.
Right.
Offering no service. So really didn't contemplate the carrier who would be coming in under a federal grant, a federal pandemic grant and then provide to only certain entities. But again, like I said, where I get troubled is charging a tax on top of taxpayer-funded projects. So I think.
Anyway, my question was, what constitutes a permit?
Okay.
From Webster to, you know what I'm saying? What, what's one permit or what, how do you group them together? That's what I was trying to.
It's basically any work done in our right-of-way.
It's the length.
Yes, um, and.
Thousand feet?
A, a, again, it could be one parcel, it could be miles. And, and Mr. Bosch's statement, I believe he said twenty-five miles. You know, so he and I and, and our team have had discussions on how do we break those up into manageable permits? Because we're inspecting work once he's finished to, you know, to make sure the public is protected for um, uh, rejuvenation of that right-of-way and at least as good as a conversation or condition as it was when it started. So, you know, what, what's a manageable number, uh, or a manageable distance? Um, however, that does, in this case, does no bearing on the cost. Uh, there are other provisions of that, you know, as far as uh, drawings given back to us so that we have locations and types of services so that we can manage those rights of way um, and limit the potential for damage going forward, say by another customer or someone like that.
Do we have? Did you ever complete the, uh, the one-touch, the one dig, the? The, the?
Dig once policy?
The dig once policy that was recommended by the broadband council. I know you had a draft, but I don't think we ever.
That has not been, that has not been, uh, uh, finished. However, in our conversations with these companies as they come through for Spark Funding or, or on their uh, work into town, one thing we are looking at and asking them, is there the potential for uh, pulling additional conduit just to have spares there while you're there pulling uh, for years? And those, those are things that we'll work through.
Anything else?
Uh, you said, uh, to Mr. Bosch, I guess it would be thirty percent coverage. That's for this year?
Yes.
So that's not your limit. You're not doing just thirty percent of the city and walking away, you're doing thirty percent this year. Okay.
What's your scope of service on that? Is that drops or is that passes? Is that hookups by the end of the year, actual clientele take rate? What are you thinking there?
If you don't mind, please. Our, uh, project as proposed, uh, to the Spark Committee was, uh, one thousand and eight residential passings. So we'll make service available. I can't have any, I can't force somebody to take our service.
Mm-hmm.
We're not a, uh, utility like others. We do have competition, so all we can do is pass and make the service available. But I do anticipate that many customers will have service before the end of the year.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hendershot?
No, sir, unless there's questions for me, I have nothing else, sir.
All right, very good. I think your, uh, discussion with like, uh, Kansas Fiber about the waiving of the fees for them. They would be providing service to businesses and
Correct.
in the city, so it is a not a, not a resident, but we are actually in business.
It's not a pass through the city and.
I think that would be a good thing.
Right, what we had contemplated was trying to avoid that person who just wants to utilize our right-of-way to bypass.
Right.
So, yeah. All right, thank you, Mr..
With, with that in mind though, Mr. Mayor, I think it's safe to assume that these permits will be coming in prior to us being, having another meeting. Is there a consensus? Can we, can we work off of a consensus that those uh, for certain conditions that those fees be waived?
Mr.?
We can keep this process moving.
Can we do that by consensus and ratify it at the next meeting? Or can we suspend the fee pending ratification at the next meeting? Okay, you'll suspend the fee. You'll charge the fee but suspend collection and then you'll present an ordinance modifying that at the next meeting.
Thank you. I just didn't want that to get
Certainly.
to be a hang-up.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Landis, or I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
No report.
All right, Ms. Landis.
No report, thank you.
Chief Hinson?
No report.
Mr. Burton?
Mayor and Council, I'll try and make it within thirty minutes. I just wanted to piggyback on a few things with Jim on the permitting and all. There is one part, caveat in it, it does say that if, uh, they can provide to businesses and residential. In talking with Peoples Communications today and in an email that we received, they are going to go ahead and look at a business model for that. And they would be in direct business per se or utilizing Kansas Fiber Net's fiber. So when looking at that, if they do get an agreement with Kansas Fiber Net, then I would ask for legal opinion on it, but my opinion under permitting is that it would then meet the intent of the ordinance.
Well, I think Peoples will meet the intent of it irrespective, but I don't think you, you can, I don't think you can prospectively waive absent what we've done tonight based upon a hope that Peoples would attach to Kansas.
No, and that's what I was saying, i- if they have a contract.
Right, right, but I, I think.
So we are looking at all the different angles.
Terrific, I think you're covered either way.
Putting a Band-Aid on.
Yeah, I think you're covered either way then.
Okay, and then, uh, real quick, I, I haven't been able to speak with Mr. Hendershot, but uh, we are working through the, uh, permit processing and we received some, uh, uh, more detailed maps today. Uh, I believe, Mr. Eckert, we were talking about phasing and, and, um, Mr. Bosch's company, RG, has placed out phasing to us. Uh, as today in five phases is how they were going to. We'll be able to supply those maps tomorrow to the remainder of this, to the staff as well as Mr. Hendershot and all. Uh, I just didn't have time to get them out today.
Certainly.
So in doing that also is, uh, it does help us, it helps them. And, uh, the bonding is been submitted today to us by RG Fiber. Kansas Fiber Net, uh, I believe will be in tomorrow. So we'll review those bondings and I'll get with the clerk and, um, legal. That's all I had.
Terrific, thank you very much. Mr. Oswald?